Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017. The clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Mikklos?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
And Morin?
Here.
And would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let's move on to agenda updates.
You have three agenda updates tonight. Item 7N on the consent calendar is going to be polled for a separate vote. Item 7P, as in Paul, has additional information that's available at the back table. And item 7Q is going to be continued off calendar.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, next item.
Your next item is scheduled presentation, item 5A. This is a presentation regarding upcoming traffic safety and operations projects.
Right, thank you. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mark Rackevan, the engineering manager with the Public Works Department. Tonight's presentation is a request that was made of me by the city manager Palmer at our bi-monthly Traffic Safety and Operations Coordinations Meeting between the city manager's office, Public Works, and the police department. Mr. Palmer asked that I touch on some of the ongoing safety and operations issues that we're dealing with around the city and some projects that we feel will help improve a couple of particular situations. This evening, I'd like to focus on two key projects, Empire Ranch Road and East Bidwell Street, but I do have a series of other projects just to give you a brief update on. So let's start with Empire Ranch Road, and this is the entire stretch from East Natoma Street down to Iron Point Road. Primary issue that we're dealing with here is a safety one, having to do with speeding. And to illustrate that point, here are a couple of radar surveys that were conducted on Empire Ranch Road, first in 2010 and more recently this spring. The posted speed limit is 45 miles per hour, which you can see represented by this blue bar here. These red lines indicate the numbers of vehicles that are traveling at a given speed. So in this case, this long line here, 27 vehicles were traveling at 50 miles per hour in this survey, and then 21 vehicles were going at 48 miles per hour, just for reference sake. The key statistics here, the 85th percentile speed you'll see has gone up five miles per hour in the last eight years. That's the key metric that we use to even establish speed limits. So if we were to, say, for example, try to revalidate our speed survey and speed limit on Empire Ranch Road right now, it would be based off of this 85th percentile of 56 miles per hour, which is not, I think, in keeping with our objectives for that street. Other statistics to be aware of, the average speed is up four miles per hour. And as you can see, the pace, which is the, if you were to just draw a 10 mile per hour band in which the most vehicles are traveling, even that is up three miles per hour, which is, say, that this isn't just outliers that are causing it. The majority of the traffic is traveling faster today than it was eight years ago.
Mark, was that speed survey done shortly after increased enforcement?
No, I think this was done just prior to, or during, not during, it wasn't on the day of enforcement, but it was in that same time period. Collision history and the volumes you see have changed over the years. The volumes, of course, have increased by about 20%, 25% over the years. The accidents have fluctuated, you know, some years are better than others. Obviously, 2014 and 16 had the highest incidence of collisions, but 2012 and 2014 were the highest in terms of the numbers of collisions per the cars that were on the road. And most germane to tonight's discussion, about a third of the accidents were found to be speed-related. And there are another small subsection of these accidents where there was no cause determined because it was a hit-and-run, or there wasn't enough data for the police officers to make a determination, but it's very likely that some of those accidents were also speed-related. So it's more like 40% of the collisions out there over the last eight years were speed-related. So that all just brings home the point that what we've all seen out there, what we're all experiencing on a day-to-day basis, the speeds are too high and need to be addressed. So just, sorry, for the next few slides, the north arrow is oriented to the left of the page, just for reference sake. So East Natoma is over here, Highway 50 is down here, this is Empire Ranch Road. What I, what this slide is showing us is the existing traffic control, which is comprised of four intersections with always stop sign control. East Natoma Street, Broadstone Parkway, Iron Point Road, and then this is the always stop at Owl Meadow, which is the street that provides direct access to Russell Ranch Elementary School. That's there for pedestrian crossing purposes. You will note this long gap, which is almost a mile between stop signs, and this is, this is the area where the speed data that you, that we were looking at earlier was collected and where the majority of the accidents are occurring. So this is, this is our objective, is to get those speeds down to an 85th percentile that is more in the 45 to 50 mile per hour range. In order to do that, what we're proposing is to go ahead and accelerate three traffic signals that are already in our capital improvement program. When the East Area Facilities Plan was developed that led to the approval of Empire Ranch and Broadstone Unit 3 developments, these signals were assumed, and we've been collecting fees towards their ultimate construction. We always felt that they're not going to be needed from a traffic operations and volume standpoint until the interchange, the Empire Ranch interchange is in place. But because of the issue, the safety issue we're dealing with here, we feel that it's time to bring those signals forward and implement a network of traffic signals. That would also include two new signals at Empire Ranch Ritchie and at Empire Ranch in Fear. And the reason for these signals is to create uniform spacing, about a quarter of a mile spacing between the signals. This will enable us to time the signals and synchronize them for 45 miles per hour.
Are the green and the red signaling, which one, what project would go first, or?
No, sir. The green are meant to indicate projects that are already in the capital improvement program, and the red are to indicate additional expenses that we would incur as a result of implementing this project. And I'll touch on that a little bit more in the next slide. So by doing the quarter mile spacing, the 45 mile an hour coordination, anybody who's going 45 miles per hour is going to hit all the lights. If you're going 55, 60 miles an hour, you're going to race forward 10, 15 seconds and hit a red light. So the objective here is to start changing the behavior of folks, and we'd leave this in place 24 hours a day, seven days a week, until we start seeing that the speeds have changed. And over time, we can go back to our normal demand response of signal operations.
So, Mark, one other question on this slide then. So you've got a number of those traffic signals marked with traffic cameras. So what's the purpose of the traffic cameras, then? What's that bring us?
The traffic cameras are part of our intelligent transportation system master plan, and they're strictly for monitoring purposes. They don't, they don't issue red light tickets, they don't record, except for very brief periods, just so we can do playback of, you know, things that we've seen recently, but we don't archive those recordings. They're really meant for-
So you can turn, so you can turn them on and off remotely?
We can, yeah. The, you see this dashed blue line, which represents a fiber optic interconnect that will help us not only with the synchronization of the signals, but it ties back to our traffic operations shop where we monitor those cameras, can turn them on and off, and make adjustments to our signals remotely.
So it's just kind of the integration of kind of the most advanced stuff that we can deploy out there then related to-
That's right. We're trying to implement technology where we can. In fact, even the detection on these signals will not be the in-pavement magnetic detect, inductive loops, excuse me. We're going to use video detection that's mounted up on the pole that can be adjusted over time, so we can set the detection zone for the 45 miles per hour. If we want to increase it a little or decrease it a little, we don't have to cut new loops, we just change the angle on the camera.
And will it also do speed?
It can be used to record speed, yes.
Okay.
And is, are we currently using any kind of like traffic management analytics or programs to?
We do. We have a central operating system called Centrex that manages all of our, our signals that are on the system, which is about a third of our signals right now. We're constantly upgrading older technology to newer technology. And the Centrex software has a number of performance measures and metrics. Lastly, the Owl Meadow, the four-way stop at Owl Meadow, what we're proposing to do there is replace that with a pedestrian-activated crossing signal. We haven't yet determined if we're going to leave it at the intersection or move it to a mid-block location. That'll come out of the design process. So the total estimated cost of this project is 2.2 million. As I mentioned, three of these signals are already in the CIP, and so we've been collecting fees for them. So the actual additional cost to implement this plan is more in the range of 1 million, above and beyond what we're already expecting to pay someday. It's a lot of buck, but I think that this project will provide a lot of bang to go with it. I mean, we'll not only have well-managed access to the neighborhoods along each of these intersections, there's going to be the new fire station at Ritchie that will benefit by having a signal there that they can preempt when they need to believe on an emergency. And then we have the improved safety at the school crossing. So I, I think that, well, I know we're in design right now. I anticipate that the design will be done this winter. We will submit this project in the upcoming fiscal year budget as a project to be constructed in the next fiscal year. Any questions, any more questions on this before I move on to the next project?
Are you essentially saying that they'll all be done at the same time? You're not going to move forward with the current CIP?
That's the plan. You know, hire one contractor to implement it all at once.
So then I guess the question is, is which fund does the $1 million come out of, or is, are we expecting additional impact fee money to cover that, or?
Very little. As you know, most of the east area is already either developed or encumbered. So if anything, this will probably come out of the Measure A, sales tax of-
So some other transportation fund that we have?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. So the next project is East Bidwell Street, and we're focusing on the stretch from Clarksville slash Scholar down to Iron Point. This is primarily an operations, operational improvement project, although there are a couple of minor safety improvements that I'll touch on. So first off, at the Clarksville intersection, on the left is the existing configuration, and the issue we're dealing with here, many of you, I'm sure, have experienced it if you've been leaving the sports complex or any activity in the neighborhood, in the very area of Kent Park. This left turn pocket routinely backs up, spills out down into the through lane, takes a long time for the signal to try to serve that left turn volume, and a lot of times, if you're at the back end of that queue, you don't make it, and it's very frustrating. It's also a safety problem when people are racing up Clarksville Road and they're not expecting to see a long line of cars stopped in front of them. So very relatively simple solution is we're going to take that number one through lane and turn it into a second left turn lane. It'll be a trap left, there'll be signs saying, "Through traffic, merge right, lane must turn left," so on. But this will enable us to turn twice as many cars in the same green signal time, so we'll be able to clear that movement faster.
What would the reasoning be for it not to be a left-hand turn and a straight-through from that one lane?
Because if somebody gets in the, that's going straight, it blocks everybody that's trying to turn.
That's true. And then it also, by having a shared movement, the two opposing sides of the intersection would have to operate separately as opposed to overlapping, and it's a less efficient signal timing plan. We've looked at the existing through volume on that movement, and we've looked at the future, the build-out volume through the general plan update forecasting. It's never going to need two lanes to go up the hill, so I think this is a very efficient use of the existing paving.
Is that, was that survey done, like, during school time or off-school time for the college campus up there?
It was done during the, the spring, so it was while school was in session, yeah. The next improvement, very minor in appearance, is we're missing a crosswalk at the signal at Power Center Drive-Broadstone Marketplace. This was brought to our attention through the See Click Fix app last year. We said, well, certainly seems like a good location, very high pedestrian volumes in the area, people moving back and forth between the two centers. It will be a little bit more complicated than just putting a couple stripes across the road. We're going to have to modify the curb ramps on both sides, and because of the angle that the crosswalk will be coming through, the detector loops are either going to need to be reset, or we'll, we'll switch to video, as I mentioned, on the Empire Ranch project. And those of you who've used Broadstone Parkway have probably encountered this odd lane drop slash weave for people that are trying to get over to the Bel Air Shopping Center. There's really no reason for this lane drop to be here. We're going to get rid of it. It'll just be, when you make the turn off of East Bidwell Street, there'll just be two receiving lanes. Hopefully, it'll reduce a little bit of confusion out there. Very, very minor improvement, very inexpensive, but I think it'll help a lot. So this next project, or this next objective, is tied more to the operations of the Iron Point Road East Bidwell intersection. Again, I think we've all observed that the southbound traffic doesn't utilize the three southbound lanes very evenly. You know, the inside number one lane almost invariably is people heading to Costco or up the hill to Empire Ranch, or to go to the In-N-Out Burger area. And the number three outside lane backs up all the way, you know, back to the Palladio for people trying to get on both directions of Highway 50 or to head westbound on Iron Point Road. So that leaves the number two lane in the middle, which seems to me to be very underutilized. In fact, kind of the last lane I rely on when I'm heading down to the highway, because I know nobody's going to be in it, so I'm kind of taking away one of my own shortcuts here. But what, very simply, our proposal, and I apologize for the, the elementary school graphics here, but essentially, I wanted to depict that we're going to do an overhead sign that tries to assign the lanes a little bit better. You know, we'll indicate that the number one lane is for White Rock Road or heading south. And then, really, what I want to try to do is get that eastbound traffic to use the number two lane a little bit more. There's no reason for them to merge over to the number three lane until they're past Old Placerville Road. And again, some people know that. A lot of folks who aren't familiar with the area seem to immediately start ducking into the number three lane, and it just causes that to back up more and more. This is an example of a project that probably going to cost, you know, in the neighborhood of $20,000. Whether or not it's going to have a tremendous benefit, that'll remain to be seen.
Is there a way to put that on the actual street instead of an overhead sign?
We could, I think, at certain times of the day when the cars are, you know, we'd have to move that so far back to avoid those queues that I'm talking about, that it might lose a certain amount of effectiveness. But we could certainly start with that. It's certainly a much more cost-effective solution.
I still think it needs to be overhead, and because of the number of trees and the buildings, if it were just a regular sign without going out over the lanes, you're not going to see it.
I'm talking about actually doing it on the lane, so-
Like pavement markings?
But pavement markings are interesting as long as you can read them, but if it's 8:00 in the morning, the traffic is backed up and nobody can see them.
Right.
So the people that were trying to, to get to do the right thing are the ones that can't read it.
Right. So now on to the, the main event, East Bidwell-Iron Point. We're all familiar with this intersection. We all know what happens out there on a regular basis. The intersection is operating at Level Service E today, sometimes F. And it's, it should be no surprise. I mean, it's, you know, at this point in time, we had expected to have at least one more interchange, either Empire Ranch or Oak Avenue. The, the need for the Folsom Lake Crossing project kind of changed a lot of our priorities and delayed a lot of things, but this intersection's carrying a lot more traffic than it has the capacity to. It should come as no surprise that the, the main areas of congestion are the northbound through and left, the southbound through, as we just discussed, again, primarily just due to inefficient lane utilization. In the morning, there's a very heavy left turn towards the freeway from westbound left, and the eastbound-
Mark, I would argue that that's going on all day.
It's going to, yeah, it's growing every day, you know, as more and more stuff happens up at Empire Ranch, but it's heaviest right now in the morning. And then this eastbound right is a real pickle. This backs up all the way past Palladio Parkway at times, or at the very least, back to the next intersection down by the A&amp;W Restaurant. So why does that, that right turn back up so much? There's, there's a combination factor. First and foremost, these three yellow arrows all represent conflicting movements that take away the ability for someone in that right turn to make a right on red. The volume of traffic that's making that eastbound right is not the issue. I mean, it's a normal volume for a busy intersection, but because they can't get a gap in this southbound through movement, they can't get a gap in this westbound left, you can even see how the, the outermost left turn pocket is heavier because they're all trying to get on westbound 50. And then the real problem is this U-turn.
Why, why did we even allow that U-turn?
Well, I think primarily because this is a highway commercial-based shopping center down here.
Well, and the other part is that In-N-Out Burger down here, you can't turn left. So to hit the freeway, you've got to go down and hit a U-turn.
Right. Caltrans would not allow us to make the Old Placerville Road intersection a full turning movement because it, and rightfully so, because if you were to allow people to make the left turn out-
Okay, I'm just, I'm just remembering why I wanted In-N-Out to come, but not at that location. That's why I voted no.
I understood.
I forgot.
Okay. But yeah, these three movements make it virtually impossible to make a right turn on red. The other likely chance that a vehicle has of making this eastbound right is when the eastbound through has a green light, but that eastbound through is such a light volume that that light doesn't stay on very long. So, you know, you don't have a lot of time where that right turn's going to get a green light. And for that same reason, adding more right turn capacity, whether it's robbing number one lane, oh, excuse me, a through lane to add a second right, or widening into the Fats Restaurant to add a second right, you're not going to accomplish a lot, because those, those vehicles are still going to have the three conflicts that prevent rights on red, and they're going to have that very short eastbound green signal. The other thought we had was maybe allowing right turns from the through lane. So, you know, kind of the point you brought up earlier, in reverse, Mr. Gaylord, of a shared through and right, that was rejected because of safety reasons. A right turn movement across a bike pocket is dangerous for bicycles, and this is a heavily traveled bicycle route, all the people going up to challenge Costco Hill. You know, this is a route that we would not want to subvert bicycle safety for what would be a nominal increase in, in right turn capacity. So the only solution that, and I should also point out, this, this intersection's been studied three times by three separate consulting firms as part of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, the East Bidwell Complete Streets Corridor Study that we did a couple of years ago, and the general plan update. The consensus of all three of the consultants and your engineering staff is that, you know, none of these improvements that I just discussed are viable, you know, there are no easy, cost-effective fixes. I think if we want to start talking grade separation or something along those lines, you know, then maybe we could have a discussion.
Oh, sorry. What was the, what was the reasoning for that, that In-N-Out right turn only? Because I feel like that strip right there is, that's Caltrans? Because coming in, if you're coming out 50, going up, and you're going through East Bidwell, that right there, it's like those two lanes consolidate and try and hit that turn right here, and they just back up for days all the way to the, all the way to the freeway. So, I mean, it's, I think that's like the biggest issue on that strip right there. Now, the intersection-
Talking about the, the right turn down here?
Yeah, yeah, right, like, right on, when you're coming in right here. This, these two lanes trying to get into these lanes?
Oh, that, that's a great point. Again, when this center was developed and they requested a left turn access into their site, we had to convert some of the northbound left turn capacity into the storage lane for this new left turn into the shopping center. So it robbed us of some of that northbound left turn capacity and made it a very awkward transition to get into the left turn pockets. So, so that's why it starts out as one lane and then opens up into two.
So that couldn't be made into an intersection right there, coming out of In-N-Out?
No, because of the, because of its location relative to the on-ramp onto westbound 50, we couldn't have, like, say, people shoot straight across that road, they'd be coming in right in the middle of the freeway on-ramp. We'd have to signalize that and stop southbound traffic yet again after they just fought their way through, you know, this busy intersection. And, as I said, Caltrans, that's in Caltrans's right-of-way, and, and they, they rejected a full movement intersection.
As, as it is, those, those traffic signals are too close based on traffic engineering standards.
Right.
It was a problem intersection from day one.
Right. So the only solution that's left to us is not a great solution. It would be, we can give this right turn more green signal by having an overlap phase that would come on when the northbound left has a, has a green light. And that's a very long green light, because it's a very heavily traveled movement. That would add more capacity for these people, these eastbound right turners, to make the turn and, and clear that queue. The trade-off is we could not allow U-turns when that happens. That's, that's engineering practice. If you're going to give one movement a green arrow, you cannot allow a conflicting movement. The U-turn would conflict with that green arrow, so we'd have to post it, no U-turn. Anybody who's making that turn now would have to go one block in any direction and make a U-turn there and come back to the intersection.
And frankly, if, if those U-turns are being done predominantly from people coming out of Hampton Inn, Starbucks, In-N-Out, everything that's up there, it also means that they're crossing four lanes of traffic to do it.
Yes.
So I have no problem, in fact, I'm very happy to see that U-turn go away, and that will force the people that are leaving that shopping center, if they're trying to get to the freeway, they can turn right on Iron Point and take, make the U-turn up at the, the westbound entrance to Costco.
I mean, I'm no engineer, but I think that would complicate everything. Doesn't make, to me, if you can't U-turn there and you have, you have no options, all you're going to do is flood traffic on all the other intersections as opposed to that main intersection right there.
It's true. It would add to the various other turning movements, but those movements have some capacity. They don't have the conflicts that we're dealing with here. Again, I'm not, I'm not advocating this, per se. This, this was the only solution that, that got any traction out of the various studies, and it's not going to eliminate the problem, it will only relieve it somewhat. And it's, again, a modest cost improvement that will give us modest improvement.
And there should, I'd like to see if you have the, the counts on the numbers of vehicles that are making that, making that U-turn. I'm going to guess it's something on the order of 50% of the people that are coming out of that, that center up there.
Probably, since it is very highway commercial-oriented and-
Right, and, and, and-
...
In the grand scheme of things, it's going to be a relatively small percentage of the traffic that goes through that intersection, but it's certainly causing the most problems.
So I actually think this will work really well for this reason, is I would strongly suggest that once we have all the connectivity with Old Placerville, the New Alder Creek Parkway, back on to East Bidwell, that, that be signed very distinctly inside that center. Anybody needing to get back to the freeway, take that route, because I'll tell you, that's what I would- what I would do. And because you can get, obviously, eastbound and westbound real simply with, you know, the, the existing interchange there. And it might, I, I don't know what the timing is on that, but it, it might, and I don't know what the, your planned timing on this is, if it's something that we feel like is worth a shot, but it, it, it might be best to hold off on this until we can really execute that, because I think we could eliminate, you know, some of us have mentioned here, you know, a lot of that is the stu- the people coming out of that center needing to get back to the freeway. And, and that, that loop around the south of Highway 50 road network there, I, I think that would relieve 80 or 90% of that coming through there. So that, that, you know, might be an idea just to hold off on that until we can execute that. What is the timing on, so, so Alder Creek Parkway-
Some of those roads are already done. I was out there a couple of days-
Well, yeah, I know some of them are done, but I, but I think Old Placerville from Alder Creek into this center is, is, if it's not closed now, it will be or something.
Yeah, it, it's still closed while they finish all the utility undergrounding in the underpass area, but it should be open by the end of this calendar year, and, and then we'll be able to, to do, just as you're suggesting, people will have another route where they can just go out of the shopping center under Highway 50, make a couple of right turns on Alder Creek and East Bidwell, and they're back at the intersection.
And you could do that by probably seven or eight posts with standard signs, fastest route to Highway 50 east and west.
Oh, we've even talked about making Old Placerville one-way coming off of East Bidwell Street, so they would have no choice but to go under the freeway and circulate back-
Right.
-if it gets that bad, if we're that desperate we could consider that.
But I think that's a, that's a nice little option kind of in our backpocket there, so that could really relieve that as well.
Right. Okay. Just to wrap this one up real quick, again, you see the cost on this is, is a lot more nominal than the Empire Ranch job, but it, but again, I would, you know, just emphasize the point that most of these improvements are not gonna get you a lot of benefit, you know, the, the striping modification at Broadstone Parkway and, and the left turn conversion at East Bidwell are probably the two that will have the most obvious benefit to the public. The others, you know, it's, it's a roll of the dice and, and it's gonna require some retraining of people, some enforcement of a U-turn prohibition. Again, at a fairly low cost, it, it's probably worth pursuing, and we could implement most of these in very short order, although I, I take your point, Mr. Mayor, that, that maybe some of it requires a little bit of patience until the transportation system catches up and provides other options.
Well, you know, based on your mention of the timing there of Old Placerville, you know, by the end of the year, I mean, we're really, you know, just months away from that, so-
Right.
So that, that might be one thing. I would support holding off on that no U-turn until we have that additional exit strategy out of that center. But, you know, all the other stuff I see here, and, and just like the stuff you had there with the Empire Ranch Road, you know, these things are certainly worth the, you know, we need to keep trying and figure out small and large ways to improve things.
Well, one other point, though, with regard to that intersection. So, the vast majority of the people, I would think, that are making that U-turn now from that center are going west on Highway 50, and it will be probably before the end of the year, well, that you will be able to get to White Rock if you're going to El Dorado Hills.
Yes.
And, you know, by the time you get to the end there, you're only a quarter of a mile from the freeway on-ramp. So what about putting signage up to direct the people that are going westbound on 50 to simply turn left on Iron Point and get on a Prairie City?
We can do that.
That's, that's the way I would go. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even attempt to make that U-turn there. And, you know, and again, I think I have, I suspect we've got far fewer people getting on the freeway at Prairie City that could be doing that just as easily and avoid some of the traffic getting on directly to East Bidwell.
So you're saying go Iron Point?
If you go Iron Point down past the high school and turn left on Prairie City, you can get right on the freeway.
Okay.
And you miss all the freeway traffic between those two exits, especially in the morning.
Okay. Let me just get through this one, just touch on these very briefly, just a few projects around town. The East Bidwell-Koloma intersection is set to be signalized. This is tied to the Sutter Middle School rehabilitation project. It was a signal, they're, they're realigning their parking lot driveway to form the fourth leg of the Koloma intersection. The school district sprung for the design of this signal. It will be constructed by the city. There will be funding contributions from the school district and from some nearby development projects.
So do we have to modify that, that curb in the street there on East Bidwell?
Yeah, it'll go away.
Good. I'll, I'll be happy because, you know, every time I'm going from Koloma to turn left onto East Bidwell, I'm sitting there for five minutes. And, and the planting in front of El Dorado Savings Bank doesn't make it any better because you can't see cars coming at you.
Right. The East and Otoma-Bowen intersection is being modified to add a fourth leg to the intersection for a development project that's strictly a developer-funded project and will be done next year. The Golf Link Silver Horn signal that we, we've spoken about before is in construction. We're awaiting delivery of the signal poles. We should be standing poles and, and finishing that up this winter. Green Valley Road widening project, we're wrapping up the design. This is the Secog-funded widening project. We should be in construction next spring or summer.
Is that the section going up to Purple Place?
Yes. Yeah, all the way to Sophia Parkway.
Okay.
The Empire Ranch Interchange, we just received proposals from two firms to do the design and environmental clearance to update them. As you may recall, we did them back in 2008, they need to be updated. So we will be back in front of this council seeking a consultant services agreement once we have their cost proposal. And lastly, I want to-
Mark, do, on the, on the Empire Ranch Interchange, absent, without the passage of Measure B, do we have sufficient developer funds to, to build that?
No, we do not.
Okay.
The last projects I want to touch on are outside our jurisdiction. It's, it's two projects in El Dorado Hills, Saratoga Way and Wilson Boulevard, excuse me, not road, Wilson Boulevard Extensions, which are tied to the Saratoga Estates Development Project here. The reason these are important is we, we've got a developing cut-through traffic issue happening up here in a neighborhood on the streets of Hildebrand and Woodhead. A, a road coming down out of El Dorado County is, is contributing to some traffic in the neighborhood.
Do we have counts on how much of that traffic's coming from El Dorado County?
Uh, around 1,000 cars a day are coming across the county line.
What percentage of the total?
Uh, that is about 90% of the traffic that goes down Woodhead. We don't know the origin of all of those cars yet, but, you know, some of them are Folsom cars, others are-
Well, 90% of the cars coming from outside the county is a huge number-
Right.
-on a 25 mile an hour street.
Yes. So there's an item on your agenda, under consent, to start implementing some traffic calming measures in that neighborhood. But those are interim measures. We're hopeful that the implementation of these streets will provide the circulation and accessibility that a lot of this neighborhood in El Dorado Hills needs in order to get down to Costco, Lifetime Fitness, and elsewhere, rather than going through that neighborhood. And that is all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, well, thanks very much, Mark. A lot of that stuff, I think, is gonna have a huge, huge improvement, so thanks for working on that. I know your job is never done when it comes to this sort of stuff. A lot of times it's, you make one change and something else pops up, so, so we'll be prepared for that. Any other questions for Mark? I do have a request to speak on this item, so.
I ended up off the subject, but it seems like in, in Otoma, we're getting a lot of big trucks coming down Otoma, and I thought at one time they weren't supposed to come that way.
Uh, they still aren't.
Well, they're still coming down that way.
The, Otoma Street is only a truck route from Folsom Prison back to the Folsom Lake Crossing intersection, and that's to provide access for the prison's truck deliveries.
Right, that's where I understood it, but I'm hearing from neighbors that it's not happening that way, so somebody could take a look. And the other day, I mentioned to the city manager, I was coming down on Post of Auburn, when a big car carrier, like you see at the auto pauses, came through and went over Rainbow Bridge, went through Riley, and the last I saw was turning left by the Sutter Middle School going through Bidwell. He was, obviously, lost somewhere. I, I had never seen that before, and I hope I don't see it again. He got through, how he got through Old Town, I'm not sure, but he made it. So maybe we have to work with the police again to, for a while, that was a real hot topic, where those trucks are going. I know that we need trucks because it's the lifeline of a lot of our companies.
Well, I'll share that with Officer Wagner or Commercial Enforcement Office.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we do have a request to speak on this item.
Mr. Vijay Jena Lagada?
Yes.
Come on, come on up to the podium here, yeah, just so we can get your voice recorded here. Good evening.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to quickly add that the Prairie City on-ramp to Iowa 50, right now it is, it says only one car, in, in non-car pool lane, one car per light. So that's causing a lot of backup on that lane, in non-car, non-car pool lane. So I request to be changed to two cars per lane.
It's a Caltrans thing, we can't change it.
Oh, really? Okay, all right, that's, that's all I, I mean, because I, I noticed so many times, even at 6:45 in the morning, it's like 20 cars out there. It's ridiculous.
Six in the morning, really?
6:45, I checked it out.
Because I was actually surprised, I went through there yesterday, and, on my way to a early morning meeting, and I was surprised that at 7:30, the, the metering lights weren't on in Folsom at all.
If the light is on, the, the, what is that?
It's the ramp metering, and they were not on at 7:30 yesterday morning.
Oh, it, it was on. I, I noticed sometimes when I, when I was driving at 6:45, 7 o'clock.
No, I'm telling, it may have been on at 6:45, but it wasn't on at 7:30.
Oh, maybe, yeah, but, yeah, when it is on, it's only one, since it's only one car per light, so very quickly it backs up, and, and it also, like, it doesn't turn green, like, for a good two, three seconds, like, so that's why it's kind of pretty backed up. Anyway, thank you for-
All right, thanks. Okay, any other requests to speak?
No.
All right, and just a last little note on this. So we do have a meeting scheduled with Everett and myself, and I believe Mark, and El Dorado County Supervisor John Heidel, and some of their staff folks in September. And that's just to make sure that we're closely coordinating some of this cross-county stuff and trying to come up with some good mutual solutions related to that. So we will report out to the council after that meeting, progress in that regard. So with that, next item, please.
Your next item is Business from the Floor. You have one request to speak from Ajit Natu.
Good evening. I'm here on a good note.
Okay.
Yay!
So I would like to call upon my Indian Association of Sacramento, some of the team members. Why don't you just stand here in support?
Bring them up here, we'll get them on camera, too, just.
And-
Your hair looks fine.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Ajit Natu. I'm the president of Indian Association of Sacramento. I live in Folsom, 939 Patrick Circle. I am here to actually offer my thank you to the city council and this management. I have seen Roger, Kerry, and Steve at the Indian Association event last Sunday.
It was, it was a wonderful event, but I do have one suggestion.
Okay.
You guys might also want to utilize the park next year. I'm just happy that I spoke to the police chief, I mean, the fire chief at another event last night, and I remember walking in saying, "Oh, it's really good that Chief Rodriguez is still at St. John's Catholic Church event," because I don't think he'd want to count heads inside that building.
Okay.
It's fabulous that it was so, that it was so well-attended, but I think we were way over on the number of people in the building.
I'll take a note of that. So, I'm gonna give council this later, which I would like to quickly read. Indian Association of Sacramento IAS is an organization in the greater Sacramento area with the key mission of facilitating communication, cooperation, and integration between Asian Indian community and the local communities. Each year, our charter includes organizing an annual cultural show, Indian, presenting Indian culture, and hosting 5K run and walk event to benefit selected charities. IAS hosted an India Day event at your location in the community hall on 28 August 2017, Sunday. On behalf of IAS and the entire team, some of them are here, I want to thank you for making the facility available to us. It was a great site where thousands of people from the greater Sacramento region had gathered together for this indoor and outdoor event. You have a great facility here, and we'll be happy to make use of it in future. Once again, please convey thank you to your management team and your team on the ground for their valuable support. Thank you, and I hope Roger, Kerry, and Steve, you actually personally came, thank you-
It was a wonderful day.
And you enjoyed it.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to offer a token of appreciation. I'm presenting the pins. Chalam.
Okay, pass those. Go ahead, go ahead, YK.
I'm YK Chalamcharla. These are the US flag and India flag together, lapel pins. We would like to present as, on behalf of our community, to all the council members.
Excellent. I noticed a lot of people wearing those on Sunday, so, and I think we should probably add that it's the, was what, 70th anniversary of India's independence?
India's independence, yes.
Great, thanks.
Well, thanks, thanks for all you do in the community, it's sincerely appreciated.
We come there or-
See you guys all the time.
You can just give it to Elaine.
So this is a later, and these are the pins.
Thanks for taking the time to come out and thank my colleagues for making time to attend that event.
Sure.
And thanks for making sure-
Kerry already said that next year you can do this. I take that, that's as our approval for next year's hall, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
No, because, well, I think it would be a good idea because you, you could use the gazebo for some of the presentations and-
Yes, but very good suggestion. We'll, we'll definitely use it.
It will put YK in one of those colorful dresses, too, and see how he performs.
Thank you once again.
Great, thanks for coming out this evening. Okay, any other requests to speak on Business from the Floor?
We have one more request from Bill Smith.
All right.
Good evening.
Evening, Bill.
Hello, Folsom. Hello, Mr. Mayor. It looks like I'm bringing you a company, and this is for me, it's got a, a little bite out of it. And what I'm looking at is this transportation game. It seems that we're about to lose half of our cars, industry. My neighbor lived, actually, they live across the street from her because she was a supplier, the Fords, she used to laugh out her window at the Fords riding around the limos. They had lost about 15 years ago, they lost $550 million one year, and they just picked up the bicycle game in San Francisco, in the Bay, and they've got these funky bikes. The car companies have come up with a dozen different electric bicycles. You ever seen one on the market? They haven't ever sold any of them. A dozen different companies came up with electric bikes, like the Porsche Electric and the Audi Electric and everything else. And Elon Musk thinks that hubcaps are gonna fly off the cars if they fly, and so he's kind of down on getting your head cut off, you know, decapitated by a flying hubcap. So, when you're from this country, you have a lot more advantage than from being from anywhere else. And I'm a statistician, and I'm a little guy in a family of super athletes, and in order to show my muster, since I was the youngest, and everybody became millionaires and, and all the women were big enough to have the guys, and we had a million millionaires about 20 years ago, everybody had houses, and nobody was liquid. So with our repatriation of our funds that are around the world, trying to find less expensive labor, we have a situation that's coming to the fore in about 100 different ways. For drones, so you can go droning down the river. Summary before last, we had 600,000- the river. Summary before last, we had 600,000 drones sold, 300,000 had to be registered because they were five pounds or more. I was just at Borders Books again, and there's another four documents there about, and they're not just magazines, these are books, and it's got the whole industry. So if you can bet these things by numbers and reduce it down, in this country, if you go into business, it gets more and more difficult all the time, and the competition is less and less...
About 30 seconds, Bill.
The competition is less and less willing to honor you. So if you could do, say, a document to the whole state, say about marketing, and you could do it at the city levels, this is where the action is turned to. The federal government is hamstrung, aren't they? The state is hamstrung. My friend got the document from me about the tunnels. He wanted to go down the ocean.
Okay, okay, Bill, three minutes is up. You got any final thoughts there?
Final thought, the guy with his stars in the sky doesn't seem to be around. I thought he was handling all the business people. I just found the guy today. And I understand he's doing a bid for people to realize how to handle lots of cities. And if the other cities can't act like this city, it's because we haven't marketed it to them. I'm in marketing.
All right, great.
I don't do sales.
Thanks, thanks, Bill.
I'm like an emissary for transportation.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, so any other requests to speak, business from the floor?
You have no further requests to speak.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is your consent calendar, and I believe item N is going to be pulled for a separate vote. There is additional information on item P, and Q is being continued off calendar.
So I will move items A through...
Wait, hang on a second. I want to pull item P for clarification on a, on a letter we received from some residents, and I have a quick question on item E. So I'll pull that one also for the question.
Okay, so I'll move A through...
Wait, hold on, hold on.
I want to recuse myself for item N.
That's already being done separately.
We're going to pull for separate vote.
So we got that. Thanks, Ernie.
Okay, so I'll move A through D, F through M as in Mary, and O.
I'll second that. All right, moved and seconded. Please call the roll on those items.
Councilmembers Miklos, Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Morin.
Yes, okay, item 7E.
So item C, item E, excuse me, is Resolution 9982. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Winner Chevrolet for the purchase of one Chevy pickup truck.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, the only question I had, and I apologize, Marcus, for not getting back to you sooner. My bad. The only thing I'd like to see in a staff report, because generally we have a 5% preference for Folsom vendors, if you will, so what I want to see in the staff reports down the line, because I know we do share purchase agreements, this is a state contract, just make a notation that, you know, we looked at the price from Folsom Chevy in this particular instance, and that they were greater than 5% of what the state contract procurement is, that we're going to piggyback with this vote.
Actually, I asked that, I asked a similar question, could we not buy it from Folsom?
So I just, I just want to make a notation, because we get asked all the time. And again, that's just my oversight, not getting back to you sooner. I'm sure you already checked, which I see you nodding, because I know you too well. So I just like to include in the staff report to let everybody know in the community, yes, we do give a 5% preference to Folsom vendors, and if our state procurement process or our state piggyback, for lack of a better term, contract just allows us to buy even cheaper than, and creates a bigger gap than the 5% preference, I just like that stated in the staff report.
All right, Councilmember Miklos.
For any departments that come in, but... And just to add to that, Steve, when I asked the question, I was told that part of the problem, because I believe the city manager also asked the question, and part of the answer is that Folsom Chevrolet doesn't do the modifications that we need on this one.
Well, I would assume that was the case as well.
So correct, so council member, oh, sorry, Councilmember Miklos, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources, that there, yes, that is one specific item in this case, and many of our department's utility service vehicles require some post-purchasing work to be done, you know, in terms of the cranes, the hydraulics, and things of that nature. And so there are few that can actually provide those services. We have reached out to Chevy and Ford and those companies for these specific vehicles, and they can provide the cab and the chassis, but not the equipment that needs to go with them.
And I actually did assume that, but again, we've been here a while, so a lot of us already know that. Again, I just want to make sure that the residents know that we're always looking to see what we can do within the city.
I think that's a really good idea.
We can be sure to add that specific information in there.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Okay, so item 7E, Resolution 9982, moved by Councilmember Miklos and seconded by Vice Mayor Howell. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Miklos, Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Morin.
Yes, okay, item, I guess, 7N, Nancy.
Now I can recuse myself?
Yes.
I'll move the item. Second.
Okay, and do you need this?
Why?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because I'm an employee of the organization.
Okay, of the FAA? Okay. Thank, thank you for that, Ernie. So with that, who moved that?
I did.
Kerry moved it, seconded by Steve. Please call the roll on that item.
Councilmember Miklos, Gaylord, Howell, and Morin.
Yes. All right, and is that, oh, P, yes, that's right. So item 7P.
So item P is Resolution 9994. This is a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to implement Tier One traffic calming measures on Ritchie Way, Hildebrand Circle, and Woodhead Street. This was pulled for discussion.
Okay, and Steve, you hand this in.
Yeah, just, well, I had a quick question, because obviously when we got here this evening, we had a couple of residents that are addressing the stop signs at Hillibrand and Woodhead. And knowing that this resolution was an all-encompassing and one resolution, I kind of wanted to hear from Mark Rackavan, if, if we didn't do Hillibrand, Circle, and Woodhead Street, what kind of impact would it be to the rest of the approvals you're asking for this evening within that traffic calming area that you're looking at?
Yes, sir. The stretch of Woodhead Street is not the location in the neighborhood that is currently experiencing a speeding issue. The stop signs in the neighborhood are intended to try to address speeding. This, this traffic calming plan was developed prior to the data collection, and then it was worked on with the residents at the Traffic Safety Committee. And at the time, the residents in the committee had no objection to just making all of the intersections always stop-controlled. I think the points that the residents raise is valid, that because it's not a speeding problem, stops, removing that stop sign from the plan is not going to change our objective here. It's not going to have a detrimental effect on, on the speed reduction strategy.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move that resolution, but withhold the approval of Hillibrand Circle, Woodhead Street, in respect to two residents that live on two of the four corners for where that stop sign was going to be placed, if I didn't hear any objection from our traffic engineer, so.
And, and are, do we feel like most of the neighborhood will be okay with this? You know, it's one of these things where we get a, you know, something that sounds very reasonable, but if people weren't, were expecting those, and now they're not going to go in, do you anticipate we might get some questions on that, or are we good?
It's possible we'll get some questions. We did make the point very clearly at the Traffic Safety Committee that we do poll the affected property owners when we put in stop signs, and that if there are objections, wholesale objections, as in this case, two of the four residents, or two, three residents at that intersection raising concerns, you know, that we can make adjustments. So I think we're in a good position.
And plus, we could revisit it later, if we needed to.
Yeah, I think that would be... So I think, I think we ought to add it at this point.
Good, good.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, before we...
Oh, yes.
...move forward with the resolution, I think we need to just make a slight change to where it says include all, always stop sign control at four intersections, if that's the direction the council wants to take.
Well, I'll include that in my resolution.
And I'll still second it.
Okay, so that resolution with those modifications, moved by Councilmember Miklos and seconded by Vice Mayor Howell. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Miklos, Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Morin.
All right, nice to be compliant with all, all the people here. Okay, so with that concludes consent. Next item, please.
Your next item is new business, item 8A. This is ordinance number 1278, an ordinance adding Chapter 14.35 to the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations. This is introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Steve Berger, Chief Building Official for the Community Development Department. You may or may not remember, I was before you about two years ago with a similar ordinance, only that ordinance dealt with solar panels on residential installations. The state felt that solar is important to the state, and they wanted to expedite permits and inspections through the system, so they required that every city and county adopt an ordinance demanding that. Folsom at the time, we were way ahead of the game, we were doing that already, so it was not that big of a deal, but the state felt that maybe they ought to do the same thing for plug-in electrical vehicle chargers. So they passed AB 1236, and that's why I'm here tonight. That ordinance requires that we adopt an ordinance, or that bill requires that we adopt an ordinance expediting plug-in vehicle charging systems. Doesn't mention anything about inspections, it's just the process of permits. Again, we're doing that now. We do some over-the-counter ones that are a little more complex, may take up to three to five business days, depending on workloads, complexity, and the contents of the drawing. So it's kind of not that big of a deal, but we have to do it. Just a few facts, fiscal year 1617, we issued, I believe it was five permits for plug-in vehicle charging units. Two of those were residential, three of them were commercial, two were at Palladio, and one was at the Hyundai, Folsom Hyundai. So we're not getting a lot of them, okay? I'm not saying that won't continue, or that will continue, but right now, there's not that many. So we're here to introduce this ordinance for first reading. I'll answer questions, if anybody has any.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, are we letting people know that, that there are rebates available when they pull the permit? Because I know SMD's got, my understanding is that SMD's got basically a $500 rebate, which pays for, I think it's the equipment or the installation, if it's residential, and the rebate, as I understand it, is about 1,500 for commercial. I just want to make sure that when people are thinking like, thinking about this, or even if somebody calls, you know, because they may be calling us first before they call SMD, just, just to make sure that they know that, that those rebates are out there.
The couple people I've talked to, their contractors already told them about that. They're, they're pretty good at that.
Okay.
Because that sells their product a little bit better.
Okay.
But thank you, yes.
What's the threshold for, on residential chargers, installing it? Is it like, not the, I know a lot of the EVs come with just standard chargers, so it's a, it's a triple charger, it goes a lot longer, but are it like the faster chargers when they install that, or then they have to pull a permit for that, or what's the threshold on it?
Yes, good question. Level one is basically your 120 volt, you just plug it in the wall. That usually takes, depending on the charge and the battery, maybe takes eight to sometimes 20 hours to charge. Level two is usually when they have to upgrade their panel to a 240 circuit, or a 240, that hooks up everything, that goes in the car, and that charges it probably about eight to 10 hours, depending on what's in the car. So yes, those are the ones that typically would require the permits. The new California Green Code has, all new homes need to have pipe already in the house and space to provide it in the panel. You don't have to pull any conductors or any wires or anything, but everything has to be there for them. If someone wants to put it in, they can do it right away. It would still require a permit, but all the hard work is done.
Mm-hmm, agree. Any other questions for Steve? Okay, I'll go ahead and, actually, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
You do not.
Okay, so no requests to speak, no other questions. I'll go ahead and move ordinance 1278.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Miklos, Sheldon, Howell, Gaylord, and Morin.
Yes.
Steve, as always, we appreciate you always being in front of everything before the other people catch up. It's a good job.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Your next item is item 8B, Ordinance 1277. This is an uncodified ordinance levying a special tax for the fiscal year 1718 and following years solely within and relating to the CFD number 16, which is the Islands at Park Shore Improvement Area Number Two. This is introduction and first reading.
All right, good evening, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on June 13, 2017, you approved an amendment to the rate method and of apportionment for this improvement area to, to account for the modification of the number of units being decreased from 168 to 126 single-family units. This ordinance, number 1277, will allow the city to levy, levy the special tax for this fiscal year and all further fiscal years for the term of the CFD, using that amended RMA. This is the first reading and introduction of the ordinance.
Okay, questions for Jim? I don't see any, any requests to speak?
You have no.
I'll move the item. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Miklos, seconded by Vice Mayor Howell. Please call the roll on that item.
Councilmembers Miklos, Sheldon, Howell, Gaylord, and Morin.
Yes. All right, next item.
Next item is City Manager Reports.
All right.
Good evening, members of city council, members of public. Well, summer went fast. I don't know if anybody else is feeling it. I'm trying to hold on to the last vestiges, but we do have really one more big event that I want to bring everybody's attention to this August, and that is August 30. We're having a Treats for the Troops donation drive. This is in support of the Fourth Annual Community Service Day, which we'll talk about in just a minute. But on August 30, it's a one-day donation drive, Wednesday, August 30, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Folsom Aquatic Center, and that's at 1200 Riley. So please, everybody get out and support our members in the service by helping the Rolling Hills Blue Star Moms and collecting items for our overseas military troops. I very much appreciate it, and it'll make you feel good. September is shaping up to be a very busy month as well. Just go through a couple of the things that we have going on here. And September 8 through 10, Friends of the Folsom Library Book Sale, so please do come out and support the friends who support the library. Our annual 911th Remembrance Ceremony is, of course, on September 11 at 9:30 a.m. That's a Monday this year at Folsom City Alliance Park. And if you haven't been out to that previously, I'd encourage you to come out. It's a very reverent and very good event. It will also make you feel good. We are working, we are beginning a construction project at the zoo that is going to be a little bit disruptive. We've got a very old sewer line that runs out to the zoo, out down through the ravine, so that construction will begin very soon. And in order to, you know, kind of facilitate visitation, we're offering special discounted admission rates to the zoo during this construction period. So we're reducing our rates to $3 per person. Of course, as always, children under two are free. And so thank you for your patience while we handle this very, very important project. Into October for sure, probably the event of the year, if you haven't heard about it, it is the Johnny Cash Trail Grand Opening Celebration. That'll be Saturday, October 14. There's runs, bike rides, any number of things going on there. It's going to be a great day of fun and celebration as we open this new section of the Johnny Cash Trail that'll essentially run from the, from the current terminus right across the street from Simran Drive, all the way around, across the prison property, around the back of the zoo, down the back of the rodeo grounds, and exit out in, right by Sharon and Digger Williams Rodeo Park. So we're very excited about getting this part of the trail done. For details, you can go find them at folsomcasharttrail.com. So please look for something to do on that day. It'll be a great celebration. I also want to let everyone know that earlier this summer, we had a couple of public hearings with regard to Folsom's 2035 General Plan. It's a project that, that we have been working on for a number of years. It did finally achieve Planning Commission and City Council authorization to go do the environmental work. That Notice of Preparation, which is a, which is a legal requirement of us going out and doing the environmental work leading up to the final approval by this city council sometime in 2018, we hope earlier 2018, as opposed to later, was released on August 18. So you can find that information out on the city's website at www.ca.us. And lastly, just one final plug for Community Service Day, September 16 this year. We have literally knocked down every single barrier to you getting out, rolling up your sleeves, and spending four days, you know, using your time, talent, and resources for the benefit of this community, so.
You mean four hours.
You mean four hours.
Did I say four days?
Yes. We'd love to have him for four days, but four hours is long.
We're worth four days, right? It's a great community. No, I meant four hours, my apologies. Get on a little bit of a roll, and I don't even hear what I'm saying. But, yeah, four hours, it's a great day. Feed you a little breakfast, send you out. If you, if you are associated with a project, you can certainly handle one that you might know about. If you, if you just want to come out and work, we'll assign you to a project, and it would be a lot of fun. So with that, good evening.
Fantastic. Thanks, Everett. Ernie, what you got for us this evening?
Well, it's busy. Everybody's busy, you know. I did have a question on Herb Engelhardt. Have we got that set in? Well, it's busy, everybody's busy, you know. I, I did have a question on Irv Engelhardt. Have we got that set in, in stone?
The, the services?
Services on Saturday?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I just hope you would close it in his honor.
Honored to do so.
And, and I'd request that we add to closing the meeting in, in memory of Irv, also to Jose Cordero.
All right, so.
Both retired police officers and both longtime Folsom residents.
Anything else, Ernie? Okay, Steve?
No, just to, actually, just a quick plug for one more event that the manager missed, and that's the, I think it's the 20th Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament, so.
It's only 20, it seems like more.
It does really, yeah. Seemed like a good idea at the time we started.
No, it's still a good idea.
No, it is. So, come out and play with it that way, and understand the mayor, if you beat his team, he's going to give out free breakfasts to 50 people. I don't know what the gift is this year, but usually the mayor announces it at the tournament, so, it's always a lot of fun, it's a great event, and certainly the recipients are of our, our teen centers at the middle school, so it couldn't go to a better cause,